I would say that the end there. Let's do this again. Okay. Wait, take a little step back.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of Mayor and Council if you will rise for the invocation, please.
Almighty God, we just give you great thanks for this opportunity to serve our community. We especially are so grateful for the blessing you have bestowed upon our town with economic development. We have prayed and you have answered those prayers and we give you all the credit for that. May we honor you with the work to be done. And again, we give you all praise. We ask your blessing on our meeting tonight. We ask this in Jesus' name, and everybody says?
Amen.
Stand for the pledge. Pledge or allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May he be seated.
Okay, just as a reminder, we have an executive session this evening. All right, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, you've all received the minutes from our last meeting. If there are no questions or comments, I'll accept the motion, receive the minutes.
Councilman Henderson, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Councilman Holland, I second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Do we have any correspondence tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, before we get started tonight, I do want to thank all of our city personnel, Charles, Tricia, Sierra, Bill, Katie, June, everybody that helped set up for the groundbreaking that was a hugely successful event, and we greatly appreciate kicking off the Western Sussex Business Campus. Appreciated the governor coming down and also want to thank the police for making it safe for him to be here. So, thank you guys so much. All right, we're going to go into new business number one, which is the election results.
Yeah, we just want to announce the results of the election that was held on April 17th. Total ballots cast were 316, which included 47 absentee ballots. Jeffrey Benson Jr. received 124 votes. Orlando Holland received 166 votes. James King received 169 votes, and Scott Peckinpah received 128 votes. So, both the incumbents were reelected.
Congratulations, guys.
Yes, sir.
Way to go. Forgot to say, before we get started tonight, the city has been experiencing internet connection problems all day, so if those online, we break and have connection, just understand we've had an issue. The state has had an issue all day with it, so. Okay, next we go to new business number two, which is going to be presented by Tricia Newcomer, our Director of Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Our Economic Development Committee met on Friday, April 23rd, to review a request from Mr. David Perlmutter, Mr. Perlmutter is here with us this evening, for a modification of his fee incentive that he received from council on March 9th. Mr. Perlmutter, just to kind of give you, reacclimate you, is doing Buildings 3 and 4, which are located along South North Street, and he's currently in the process of working on Building Number 3. That's the southern part of that yellow area. And as part of this project, there's a sewer line that runs straight through that property that does need to be relocated. And the City Council gave an incentive to Mr. Perlmutter on the 9th, as I said, to agree to assist the project by assuming the responsibility and the cost of paving South North Street, and a fee reduction on future projects in the amount not to exceed $175,000, which was inclusive of the cost of paving, and stipulated that the condition of the reduction in fee waiver would expire within three years from the date of that approval. Since that time, this is a site plan, but I have zoomed in. Since that time, Mr. Perlmutter has worked with his engineer and our city engineer to revise the plan such that the sewer relocation will only impact the area of Building 3 currently. So, he is asking for a modification of that $175,000 incentive to basically be divided in half. He would like to see $87,500 applied now, as he does Building Number 3, and then the additional $87.5 applied to the future Building Number 4 when it's scheduled for construction. We did ask during the committee meeting when he anticipated that to be done. Certainly, it will be done after Building 3 is pretty much well leased, not before fall of 2022. So, the committee did have a lot of conversation around this. They did agree that if we waive this, that the cost of the paving would be done now, so that would be inclusive in that first $87.5, and that the developer would then be responsible when he comes back for Building 4 to do the, he would have to do the repairs to the road when he had to open that up. So, the Economic Development Committee did make a recommendation to accept the request from Mr. Perlmutter, and again, stipulated that that would sunset on March 3rd, 2024. You don't know, Mr. Perlmutter, did you want to add anything?
No, he's doing a great job.
Got to cover. He is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, are there any questions, Councilman King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Trish, originally, we approved the project to be completed in entirety, as you talked about coming in and implementing half of it, and then doing roadwork. So, going in after spending quite a bit of money on road improvement and then going in, what does that look like? Are we going to go in and cut the roads, tear the roads up to, when we go back in, to install the other half of that? I mean, would it make more sense to wait and do the roads?
So, in speaking with the Director of Public Works, he prefers to go ahead and go ahead and get it done now. It would require a road opening, which with any development, when there is a road opening, the developer is responsible for repairing that back to its original condition. So, that cost would then be on the developer to do that.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I did ask Mr. Perlmutter while he was here that he is still on track with the demolishing of the buildings downtown, so that was, we're happy to hear that. Okay, if there's no other questions, then I will accept the motion.
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee to modify the fee reduction incentive for the residents of River Place Building Number 3 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Councilman McCoy, I'll second.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Perlmutter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you, Trish.
All right, next we have the bids on the HVAC.
So, council has in their package a bid tabulation. We received one bid for this, and I will share with council a couple things. We actually had to rebid it. The first time we bid this, there were no respondents, so the city clerk reposted this. We gave them some additional time. We did receive one bid from National HVAC Services in the first year amount of $18,900, and then it goes up from there, year two, $19,469, and then the final year of the contract, $20,055. National HVAC is the current vendor. The only other thing I'll say is this price, the first year price, is substantially higher from last year's price. Last year's price was about $11,000. We have added two units. We added a unit at the GMB building when we remodeled the second floor, and when we remodeled the police department garage and turned it into a gym, we added a unit there. So, that's partial explanation for the additional cost, but they are a good vendor. They are our current vendor, have had the contracts the last two contract cycles, so we would recommend continuing with them.
Okay, are there any questions in regards to the HVAC maintenance bid? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to award the HVAC maintenance bid to National HVAC Systems LLC in the amount of $18,900 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman King. Do we have a second?
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman Holland?
Aye.
And Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right, next we have Chris Sims to go over our power cost adjustment calls for 2021.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so, for the electric rates, we need to re-levelize the PCAC. As in our ordinance, every time that the wholesale rate changes, we're required to do a re-levelization of the PCAC. So, this is just pretty standard, straightforward for what we've done with the electric rates in the past. So, we're not suggesting any rate maintenance at this time, since we just did the customer charges back in December. So, my recommendation was to at least let those sit for a year before we would consider additional rate maintenance at this time. So, adjusting the PCAC is for the increase, well, it's two parts. One is the increase in the DMAC rate. It increased almost seven tenths of a cent, it's roughly $80,000. And the other part that needs to be increased is when we re-levelized the PCA back in July of 2020, basically this time last year, there was still about $130,000 that was over-collected from customers for power supply costs, so that needed to be returned to them. So, even if the DMAC rate did not change for this year, the PCAC would have to be increased in order to no longer refund customers, because where we're at today is we are almost even, it's like $10,000, which is basically zero, in terms of the over/under collection. So, really, this is, the impact is relatively small for customers. It's about a 1.7% increase, which is, you know, about $2 on a residential customer's bill.
Okay. All right, are there any questions in regards to the PCAC adjustment fee? Councilman King?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, can we talk a little bit about the consumption credit, what it currently is, and your recommendation to decrease it, to take that to the .01161?
Yeah, currently, it's a credit of .0138, and my recommendation is to reduce that to a smaller credit of .01161.
And with that reduction, what would the total impact be have for, like, a residential customer?
Right, so for a residential customer, if they used 1,000 kilowatt hours, it would be $2.19 per month.
But do you think it's, I mean, do we need to do an increase at all? I mean, when you look at, when you consider the $2.5 million that's moved from the electric department to the general fund, with it being so minimal, do you feel that there's even a need to raise anything?
Well, it depends particularly how the budget is structured, and there's, we're really working up against a deficit simply because of COVID, the sales to commercial customers, even if we include an increase in sales for Amazon, we're still expecting sales overall for the commercial customers to be way down. And it's about $200,000 roughly is what the reduction in margins from those customers have been over the last 12 months. So, the budget, if there were no changes in any of the expenses for the 2022 fiscal year, we would already be operating at a $200,000 deficit, and then if we were not to adjust the PCAC, we would under-collect power supply cost by an additional $225,000 or so. And so, we would only be delaying the need to do an increase in the future, because power supply costs, at least DMAC is forecasting that it's going to continue to stair-step increase going forward, and it almost has to out of necessity. So, the DMAC rate was at its highest, I think it was 2011, it was about $92 or $93 a megawatt hour, and that went all the way down to about $67 or $68 a megawatt hour last year. That's the lowest it's been in nearly, it's got to be more than 15 years. And so, this small increase up to $69 is still low, like, their rates, even with this small increase, is still going to be less than what it was two years ago.
Yeah, and just to follow, so I understand the commercial aspect through COVID, sales are down about 300,000. The residential aspect, with the growth we had, how much is residential growth?
Right, no, there absolutely has been.
Do you have that percentage of what that looks like?
In terms of the percentage, no, because the completion of the River Place Building 2, I believe it was, that one was largely filled in the test year that we had. So, it's really hard to identify what the growth in the residential sales are, simply because they're very highly sensitive to weather, in addition to what's happening with COVID. But we had an extremely mild year last year, so I think the increase in sales specifically from the increase in new customers on the residential side is likely had been offset by the milder weather. It's just when you've got the entire rate class essentially using less power in that time period, that, sure, you know, we could have an extremely hot summer, we just don't know yet. There was some rebound in the beginning of this year, like, it was a little bit colder this winter than it was the previous winter, but it's really hard to say how much is, the weather is, far outweighs the addition of maybe 40 customers for the year.
Sure. So, the residential growth doesn't offset the commercial?
It does, but it's to a very small degree, because, like I said, if we had 40 or 50 new residential customers, if you have one mild season, when you have thousands of customers then using less power, you can't identify or isolate what the overall impact is to the budget as a result of those residential customers. Now, we did give the residential customers specifically a $100,000 break, I believe it was two years ago. It was 2018. And that was to be shifted to the water and sewer rates, and I don't believe that those rates had changed since then. So, they did get a decrease, the residential specifically, when no other class did.
So, a decrease in the cost per kilowatt or a decrease in the water and sewer?
In their rates, that's correct. So, I looked at it, since, I believe, the last adjustment in 2020, there was essentially no change to customers, 20, yeah, 2020. 2019, there was about a 3% reduction, and the year before that, it was about 6%. And so, that's, they've basically had a 10% reduction, and that goes back very far, because before that, it was roughly averaging, like I said, in those high 90 range.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. McCoy?
You mentioned that you anticipate the DMAC cost to continue to escalate into 2022?
That's correct. DMAC, when they provide the wholesale projections each year, it's about the first or second week in December, they provide a four or five-year projection of what they expect the rates to be. I mean, the operation of the, you know, the generation that they own is more stable than, and they could certainly buy some power ahead of time, so they have a pretty good idea of what it should be, but I'm sure they don't finalize it until it gets maybe six months in advance or three months in advance.
Okay, thank you. Is DMAC still ramping up on the green energy side to meet those?
Yeah, we're, excuse me, we're state mandated for an RPS, a renewable portfolio standard, so we are meeting those requirements, but yes, sir, we have to purchase renewable portfolio and maintain a renewable portfolio. I think right now, we're just below 25% of the power that we buy, but we're on track to increase.
And it's my understanding, the more green energy we add, the more expensive it can be.
Those contracts can be more expensive, yes, sir.
Okay.
I just have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman King?
Yep, and this may be more towards Charles. So, can we talk a little bit about the budget and the money? So, what's the city's expectation for the electric department to generate in revenue? So, like I alluded to, I know it's down from last year?
It is.
But the two point, the two point, almost $2.5 million are transferring over into the general fund, what does that look like? So, what does the city forecast or project or need from the electric department?
All right, so, actually, smart utility management, Mr. Sims, does a lot of budget work with our Director of Finance. As he stated, this year's budget is down $200,000, and we can point to a couple things. As he said, the weather, commercial businesses, I mean, we all realize, a lot of those businesses were shuttered or running at half speed. So, there was that component in our projected revenues through the electric department, so about $200,000. Part of what we do here, we create a gross operating margin, and part of that is a transfer, as you talked about, into our general fund, is what typically council does with it. That number last year was $3.2 million. It's projected this year to be about $2.8 million. So, $350,000, $400,000 of, that's less projected this year in our budget. Has two components, one, the 200,000 plus projected, less revenues we're going to, less sales we're going to make. In addition, part of that is increased cost in our electric department, okay? Salaries are up, insurance is up, we're buying two vehicles proposed this year. So, that's the other component of about $180,000 or so in our preliminary budget. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was looking more about total dollars. So, what's the city, you know, when you look at a budget, what's the number, what's the city expecting or wanting the electric department to contribute to the budget?
Okay, so...
Two million, three million, what does that number look like?
Well, and we've never really done it that way. We've put a stake in the ground for a second. We are going to make revenues be $3 million a year. We don't do that. We get the projections of sales, we factor in any new load or reduced load that we have. One of the big things that reduced our load over the last half a decade or so was distributed energy. So, people that put in solar farms or things like that reduced our sales. A lot of people over the last 10 years have also LED lights, energy efficiency, so that's reduced our volumetric sales. So, we look at and we project that, and then we work our budget somewhat backwards. We identify that transfer to general fund to pay for things like police and parks and recreation, all that, and then we try to control our costs to the extent that we can so that we don't have to do rate increases, you know, unpredictable to our residents, if that makes any sense. We want to, we want to try to keep these stable rates, and something Mr. Sims talked about, you know, DMAC has heard from its members, Cefor definitely being one of them, that, you know, we don't want to be in the market when costs are very high and very volatile. We tend to focus towards longer-range contracts, so they're predictable. We we tend to focus towards longer range contracts, so they're predictable in cost, and and that's the way our portfolio is established. And and this is a this is kind of a result of that, and that, as Mr. Sims stated, over the last few years, those contracts have paid off, those contracts are resetting, and as the mayor said, we're now getting into more green energy, we're getting into energies change, you know, we don't coal is really non-existent in a lot of areas, a lot of ours is from natural gas. So as long as that natural gas price stays low, we're we're in pretty good shape. If that starts to change, we'll look at different portfolio mixes and things of that nature.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you, Charles. Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions, then I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman McCoy, I'll make the motion to change the power cost adjustment clause effective with the electric bill for May 2021, consumption to a credit of point zero one one six one per kilowatt hour as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Councilman Holland, Mr. Mayor, second that motion.
Okay, thank you, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman McCoy?
A couple of the things that Nationwide offers that Pan American doesn't, as far as why we chose to stay, or that's what we're gonna recommend, is to stay with Nationwide. They have a an ERR, which is a it's a rebate program, and so what happens is if we if our premiums and our claims come in at a certain level, they will refund a certain part of the premium back to the city. And so based on projections, that looks like approximately maybe, depending on claims, it could come in at about twenty thousand next year. So that is that program, our retiree benefit program is through the Hartford Group, and their their rates are about the same, they are showing a rate increase of about two point five seven percent. And let me take go back one step, the Nationwide premium is going up approximately five point nine five percent, and that's after last year was only a point oh three percent increase. But when you look at Segal Health Plan Cost Trend surveys, the inflation trend was seven point seven, so at least we are coming in under the inflation trends. But so that's that's kind of the the program itself. On the on the city side, as far as the recommendation is to keep our our health insurance the same, but since the cost increase did go up, we are recommending that we keep the employee percentages the same, which, based on the chart that you have in front of you, that shows that for single coverage, that weekly payroll deduction will go up by seventy-nine cents, employee child coverage would go up four dollars and twenty-seven cents per week, employee spouse and employee family would increase by six dollars and sixty-five cents per week. So that is our recommendation at this time.
Okay, are there any questions from council in regards to the changes in insurance? Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for standing in, June. The are there any additional offerings that than what we had, or what the city had the previous year? I mean, I I mean, previous years, you had MedTipster and Telehealth and and a lot of other things, were there any additional values for that?
Yes, I I did fail to mention, and it's a it's a value-added cost, no additional cost to the city, so it's a, I shouldn't, value-added benefit, not a cost. It there is a it's a health and wellness program, and I'm looking through here to see, I know it's in his information.
Number four, is it?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, yes. The it's called a Healthy Lifestyle Partnership Program. It is a voluntary program for employees. Like I said, there is no added cost to the city administrative, Integra Administrative Group, they're absorbing that in their administrative fee, so if you look at their detail, you'll see that the administrative fee essentially stayed the same from one year to the next. But that is a you can download, from the way he explained it to me, there's an app that's available, the employee can download it to their phone, and they can participate, you know, help them, it's actually can be kind of a healthy competition with their other employees. They can try to lose weight, they can, you know, just different things, there's maybe they can help watch their diet, there's different tips about, you know, what they could eat, and just different things like that. But everything else, I believe, is still the same, there's Swift MD is still part of the program, MedTipster, Swift MD is telemedicine, just as an explanation, if if for some reason you had something on the weekend and you couldn't get into your doctor, you can call this Swift MD, and depending on what it is, I mean, it's, you know, telemedicine, that they can do certain things, maybe sometimes you take a picture of something and upload it, and they can look, you know, if you had strep throat, they they could take a look at the picture and say, oh, no, that doesn't look like that, or, you know, something of that nature. MedTipster is a free generic prescription program. Again, that that is where you could check around to the different local pharmacies and kind of price out your medicines and see if you can get a better a better rate somewhere else. The dental network is still the same, the vision network is still the same, and I believe there were no other changes.
Do you have another question, Mr. Henderson?
Well, June has just said there were no other changes, I I take it that there were no services that were removed?
No, none, none were removed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for June? Okay, if not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Henderson, I make a motion to approve the health insurance renewal quote from Nationwide Insurance Option 8A, with the employee contribution towards the premium remaining at the current percentage as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Henderson, is there a second?
Councilman McCoy, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thanks, June.
Thank you.
Appreciate you jumping in. All right, we're gonna skip over items six and seven till after we come back after executive session, we'll go to old business, and Charles, will you be taking that, or is Mr. Bennett?
This is the second reading and changes to the City of Seaford Municipal Code, Chapter Six, Article Two, Electric Rules and Regulations, Chapter Twelve, the city's rights and responsibilities in the provision of electric service. Paragraph D, master metering and sub-metering, and Chapter Thirteen, customers' rights and responsibilities in accepting electric service and resale of electric. Two weeks ago, had the first reading, we were approached by someone who wanted to to put some electric vehicle charging stations in town, we had to change these regulations a little bit to to be able to make that happen, so.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Bennett while he's here in regards to these changes? Okay, if not tonight, we'll accept the motion on these changes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman McCoy, I'd like to motion to approve the changes to the City of Seaford Municipal Code, Chapter Six, Article Two, Electric Rules and Regulations, Chapter Twelve, City's Rights and Responsibilities in the Provision of Electric Service, Paragraph D, Master Metering and Sub-Metering, and Chapter Thirteen, Customers' Rights and Responsibilities in Accepting Electric Service, Article M, Resale of Electricity as Presented.
Well done, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Councilman King, I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman Henderson?
Aye.
And Councilman Holland?
Aye.
Yes, Bill, thank you so much, appreciate your work on this. Okay, reminders of meetings.
Yes, sir, we have two. Cleanup Week is May tenth through the fourteenth for City of Seaford resident households only. We do have a list at our website, WWC4DE.com, you can click on Home and then Service for the drop-down information on Cleanup Week to find out what we will and will not pick up during that week, so we encourage all our residents to take advantage of that. Budget workshop meeting here at City Hall, May fourth, 2021, six P.M. until eight P.M. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll start with committee reports, we'll start with Councilman Henderson with Police and Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report has been submitted in its entirety. I will go through a few highlights under under the Seaford Volunteer Fire Department, Chief Wilson has submitted a report. He reports fire calls to date of two hundred and fifty-three, for an average of two point one eight calls per day, sixty-two fire calls for the month of April so far, for an average of two point three eight calls per day. Under EMS, there's eleven hundred and fourteen calls to date, for an average of nine point six calls per day, and two hundred and five EMS calls for the month of April so far, for an average of seven point eight eight calls per day. Combined total is eleven point seven calls to date for 2021. Under significant calls, there was unfortunately a fatal motor vehicle crash on April twelfth on Woodland Road. April eighteenth, there was a working structure fire on Seaford Road with in which they assisted Station Eighty-One from Laurel. April twentieth, there was a school bus crash on in the city on State and North Arch Street Extended, and that they did transport one child to the hospital. On April twenty-fifth, is assisted Station Seventy-One Blade Fire Company for a working structure fire on Cool Branch Road, so. Under Apparatus, Tower Eighty-Seven is still out of service, but is expected, it was expected to be back in service today. All ambulances will be DOT inspected this week. Under EMS, the new ambulance B-87 is online, and the department's awaiting their production pictures, so hopefully we'll have something to show you very soon. You you'll see a a list of training activities that the department went through and community events, which the department stays busy contributing to the community. Of note, the the last item, pardon me, department personnel met with the city public works and the police department to discuss some issues at Bel Air neighborhood regarding fire fire apparatus access on on those narrow streets when when cars were parked on both sides and and at times, there's improper parking that that impedes access to the emergency vehicles, including EMS and fire equipment, so they're they're actively working on solutions to keep keep that neighborhood safe. On the Seaford Police Department, pardon me, you'll see the the columns with the chart with crimes to date, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one year to date, all crimes, eighteen twenty-eight, drug crimes are a hundred and twenty, and overdoses are nine. All traffic tickets are twenty-three hundred and seventy-three, with seventeen DUIs, one hundred and fifty-four crashes, and one hundred and thirty-four or thirty-five false alarms. You'll see the crime view data, it it doesn't transpose very well, hopefully we'll be able to get you a chart that will go up so that you can see it more easily, but it it is it is good information showing the the days of the week where the crimes occur and the times of day in which they occur, and it might surprise you that some of these crimes are happening during during daylight hours, you you might think that some of these crimes would happen at night under the cover of darkness, but a lot of them occur in broad daylight. You'll see another you'll see another chart with drug complaints attached to it and their distribution throughout the the week and times of day, as well as a traffic chart. You'll you'll note a number of significant events which has occurred. There's these are these are just significant events the chief has reported, as I think I've reported on before, the increased number of domestic responses or calls for service. So you'll also see some of the administrative activities in the report, which are numerous, and some of the events that they continue to to contribute to the community. Of of note, on April twenty-second, the Axon Body worn Camera Contract was signed, and this will be a fully integrated system to include in-car, BWC and interview room cameras, implementation for body worn cameras, or BWC portion is expected to be in the early summer. And I'd like to wrap up. If you would please keep Delmar Police Officer Corporal Keith Heacock in your prayers, he was critically injured in the line of duty on April twenty-fifth, so pray him up, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson, and appreciate your leadership on the Police Advisory Committee too, that was a great first meeting, appreciate that. Okay, next we have codes, Parks and Rec, Councilman Holland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so for Parks and Rec, soccer fields have been prepped for the first week games, and softball fields are ready for tournaments. They assisted with groundbreaking at Western Sussex Business Park, and they met with Delaware Cooperative extension about potential youth soccer training series for the summer. The River Fest Committee meeting was held on four fifteen, and the July tenth date has been set, and they had a new event to the river called Poker Paddle. An advertisement for the upcoming Youth and Pickleball Planet is being broadcasted. And we'll switch over to code. One thousand five hundred and sixty-eight rental license has been issued out of one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight, seven hundred and six rental inspections have been completed, with more scheduled, and the third classroom building has been started at Montessori School, and all the work is routine. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, our crew department's been really busy here, so they're doing a great job, so thank you. All right, next we have electric, Councilman McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hit a few highlights here, since the last report, a few of our members here, Tyler Sewell completed groundman training, and Greg Brooke and Nick Smart were recognized by DMEC for assisting the City of Dover during the latest hurricane. The crew also helped out set up for the groundbreaking at the WSBC, installed the new banners on High Street from the DSA, and worked on the mounting the, excuse me, worked on mounting the security camera to the pole for the sports complex. The director had a budget meeting with Charles and June, they presented three recommendations at the four thirteen council meeting, as well as accepted the city's recognition for helping the City of Dover during the previous hurricane. They worked on the estimate for the Sunrise Motel and reviewed the Prince for Lakeshore Motors. Over the next few weeks, gonna continue to work in Mirrorfield One, Phase Two B, set the electric vehicle charging station, as well as continue to work in Herring Run Professional Park. That's a few of the highlights, Mr. Mayor, but a report's been submitted in its entirety.
Thank you very much, been a lot of positive feedback on the banners downtown, so that's, appreciate those guys taking the time to do that. All right, and finally, we have Public Works, Wastewater, Councilman King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report has been submitted in its entirety, I'm gonna start off with the Public Works Department and just hit some of the some of the highlights. They've been out. They've been out, first round of weed spraying is taking place, changing the speed limit signs on Arch and Pine to fifteen miles an hour. They had to pool and rebuild the lift station at Virginia Commons. They've been working on potholes throughout our town. They partnered and provided flaggers for the groundbreaking ceremony. They had to pool and unclog both pumps at the Seaford Village Lift Station. They partnered with the Parks Department and
Test, that you can submit your photos of landscape or activities or pools. These are things we're going to try to use throughout our website, and just sort of to celebrate the great town that we live in. You can email it, or it's all on our website, and there's going to be a prize, including gift baskets, values up to seventy-five dollars. Want to thank our marketing team for putting this together. It's a great effort. Appreciate it so much. So please check it out.
All right.
Thank you. With that, I'll accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, second?
Councilman Holland, a second in motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, case unanimous. Thank you.